Present Woodhouse, Dr. Goodell, Harris, and Myatt, so we do have a forum.
All right, okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Bracy. So let me turn the meeting over to Mr. Roberts, and he's going to introduce us to our new board member, new board of trustees member.
Great, thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. I'd like to welcome Dr. Goodell from the Pecosin City Public Schools. He joins us from North Carolina. He is relocated to Virginia. A bi- a little short bio is included in your board packet for your viewing. And I'll just turn it over to Dr. Goodell to kind of give some brief remarks.
Good afternoon. Sorry, I was kind of not prepared to make remarks, but I've been a resident goes now for five years, been on the school board for a little under a year. I have my background's really in STEM education. I'm a former science teacher. But now I'm a the Mark Pass Night and Doubt Professor of STEM Education at Elizabeth City State University, which is just across the border over in, you know, already is neck of the world, neck of the woods as well. But so I serve in that position and, you know, I make the commute every once in a while, every time I need to. Hope it's been a little helpful and not have to do as much, but, you know, that's that's starting to kind of wane and but no, I love serving both communities and, you know, I'm a product, I'm a product of tide water. Happy to be in this area and see what, you know, what we can grow and do with New Horizons and the Peninsula area.
Hey, thank, thank you, Dr. Goodell. Welcome again to the Board of Trustees.
Yes. I, I'll say the same, Dr. Goodell. It's good to have you as part of this board, and we welcome you. And thank you so much for showing up on tonight. And so we'll move on from there to Ms. Bracy has, we have some public comments. And so we'll move and turn it into the hands of Ms. Bracy.
So yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we do have one individual present on the call for public comment. I will allow that individual to go first, and then we have three letters that I will need to read following the comments. The speaker tonight is Michelle Duesbury-Woody, and she is a resident of York County. And her topic is warp environment. So that is the name of the individual who is present on the call.
Good evening, everyone. With no disrespect to anyone, I'm going to be reading my comments. And as Ms. Bracy said, my name is Michelle Duesbury-Woody. I'm actually an instructor at New Horizons Butler Farm Campus for the Certified Nurse Aid Program. At least until June, after which time I have accepted a position with the Virginia Board of Nursing. Having done so, I feel as though I am finally safe to verbalize some serious concerns that I have with no fear of repercussions or literally teaching from a closet or being dismissed altogether. I love New Horizons, not just because it's where I work, but because my own children gained their AMT under Roxanne and Micah Banny. This allowed them to get their thousand hours direct patient contact that is necessary for many students to apply for medical school. Both of my own children are currently in medical school because of the help they got from New Horizons. And I am truly afraid of what is to become of this wonderful institution. Over the past four years, I have watched as wonderful staff members left due to the way things are currently operated under our current executive director. Since he has also made himself the head of our Human Resources Department, we feel as though there is no recourse available for any grievance. I use the term "we" because there are many staff members at New Horizons who feel much like I do. If you do not believe me, offer them immunity of sorts so that they could be able to speak without fear of repercussions. And you will hear many narratives much like mine. You could also hear the same if they were offered exit surveys like most other jobs offer. This year has truly been the straw that broke the camel's back. When the CTE side of things, our classrooms are run more like they're not an employee environment any longer. We have a severe lack of support in all things. I had an extreme discipline issue at the beginning of the year with a student. She had multiple incidences that culminated in her standing outside of both the building and my door beating to gain entry as she hurtled threats at me. After receiving threats at the school, I felt as though as I had no other option but to get a protective order from the court systems. The judge requested that the administrators, who had been involved in the incident, accompany me to get the permanent order after I received the temporary order. The executive director would not allow my assistant principal to accompany me to the court as the judge requested. Our building principal was out sick, but the executive director was in fact in the building. Within our own programs, we have very specific items related to each program. For example, my program is governed by both federal and state legislation. The Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act of 1987 is federal legislation that requires a certain amount of education and testing. The Board of Nursing also supersedes the Department of Education. The state legislature number I read for my curriculum is law. I have been forced to sit in on Good Life Solutions meetings, which more than Good Life serve to discuss and review of my curriculum, which is law. So this is not possible. The employees that sat in the meeting only care if my students have passed their state boards and received their certification from the Board of Nursing. This serves as their minimum proficiency test. Instead of allowing me to do what I've done for the past six years, I now waste my time sitting in meetings that have no benefit to me or my students. All of the instructors that I know provide job placement assistance for their students as well, at no additional charge. We know our students' strengths and weaknesses, and we know what would be good for each of them. More than that, we know about their educational aspirations. I've also had to sit through meetings regarding post-secondary education for my students, even though there is no understanding of the importance of prerequisite programs or how to enter them. As a veteran nurse, I can recognize a personality disorder fairly quickly. As a staff member at New Horizons, I see narcissistic behavior from our executive director at every turn. After the incident where the student required the restraining order, the executive director paid an incredibly rare visit to my classroom. As it was the day after my distressing day in court, I expected some discussion about the incident. After all, he's the head of Human Resources. The only topic of conversation was the executive director. Things that gave him notoriety or accolades are his focus. The health science teachers were paraded at EVMS, where we heard all about what he had done in his previous position and how he wanted to do those things again in our simulation lab. I've not heard a single word about how he wanted to complete these things after that visit. His only opinion is the one he seems to value, and that comes from himself. We, the staff, are stakeholders in New Horizons, and things are continually done without any discussion or input from us. I was actually written up on our last Board of Nursing visit because the executive director changed our certificates at completion with no regard for any information from any of us. There's information that needs to be on the completer certificates, but he only wanted something fancy and signed. Instead, he removed our program information and my signature, which is what the board values. In addition to all these other issues, the executive director is rarely in the building, if it would appear. My students knew who the previous executive director was. He would stop by at least once a quarter to check in and see how things are going. And my students would have absolutely no idea who the current executive director is at New Horizons. I can count the number of times he's been in my room on one hand for six years. I have so much very more that I would like to say, but I understand that I'm restricted to three minutes. I hope that my information has shed light on the demoralization that is occurring. If any of the board would like to discuss these issues further, I would be happy to discuss the plethora of issues that I have. I am also certain that if you ask staff members and give them no fear of repercussions, you would hear much the same. I believe that a climate survey would be warranted in this situation. It would be of great benefit to have an external professionally trained human resources person to hear what needs to be said. I'm not the first experienced staff members to leave due to a toxic work environment. And if this is allowed to continue, I certainly will not be the last. I'm just praying that my words do not fall on deaf ears and that you would at least take the time to investigate what is happening at New Horizons. It would be devastating for me and for this community to lose this incredible institution, one staff member at a time. Thank you.
All right. Um, we, um, we, we never discuss the public comments on camera. We will talk with Dr. Roberts off camera. And, and so we thank you so much for your sharing with the board on tonight.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will now read the three letters that we have received. Letter number one reads as follows, and I'll ask you, please bear with me, because at least two of them are lengthy. The first one is not. There are many staff working at our facility, and many of them are underpaid and underappreciated. The biggest shortage I noticed is how little paraprofessionals make considering how much work they are doing. Paraprofessionals are not doing the same work as a teacher, but they often do as much work as a teacher. They are vital for the classroom, and many of the classrooms would not be able to function without their efforts. It is disappointing that although they are putting in so much effort, their efforts are not being rewarded with an appropriate salary. On top of the salary issues, this year has proved to be quite difficult with staffing shortages. Many staff have been moved around, given more work to do, and dealt with much more stress than ever. However, even though the workload has increased, staff has not been allowed any extra time off. There are many reasons staff have needed to take time off this year. Sickness, mental wellness, different schedules for their children's schools, and just having to squeeze in doctors' appointments, and maybe even some try to use their time off for themselves to enjoy some free time. It is very frustrating to be overworked and then having limited days off. Docking your pay for days off when we have such a limited amount of sick days. With COVID surrounding us, many of us have to be extra cautious when we are sick, whether we know if it is COVID or not. I think the amount of sick days and time off should be increased for this year because there are so many extra factors coming into why people may need time off this year. I feel that the role of our staff is so underappreciated. A simple thank you email does not make us feel appreciated, and we need real tangible benefits for all the work we put into our students and the school. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my concerns, and I hope you take them into consideration. This letter was from an anonymous writer. Letter number two, from Jamie Lawson, Speech Language Pathologist, Center for Autism. Mr. Roberts and members of the board, I currently am in my third year at New Horizons, working as a speech language pathologist at Woodside Lane. I service students in the Center for Autism and ED/ID programs. I have found during my time here at New Horizons that the paraprofessionals play an integral part of the success our students have with their academics, communications, and functional skills. Paraprofessionals act as communications, communication partners with our students, including those outside their designated classrooms. They receive communication, partner training, including Project Core and aided language stimulation. Through these trainings, paraprofessionals are equipped to model, prompt, and encourage optimal communication with our students. Most all of our students use some form of aided communication, such as no tech communication board or a voice output device. Paraprofessionals receive training on how to prompt use of these multiple communication modalities with each of their students. Our paraprofessionals act as a great support to me as I provide group and/or direct speech therapy services to students on my caseload. They provide feedback on what is working or what may need to be modified. They jump in and participate in my group's speech therapy sessions as we use a push-in model within our classrooms. Our students build strong relationships with the paraprofessionals assigned to their classrooms. These staff members are the ones getting them on and off the bus, helping them cope with transitions throughout the school day, assisting with meal time, bathroom time, and much more. Our paraprofessionals are advocates for our students. They are stakeholders in the goals set for our students, including academic, communication, and behavior goals. I am a better speech pathologist because of the paraprofessionals, and I get to work within, and day in and day out here at Woodside Lane. They know how to lift me up when it's been a rough day. I am thankful for them and what they bring to my workday. I ask that each of you take time to evaluate the contribution our paraprofessionals are to our programs. I ask that you take too hard the value they are to our team. We wouldn't be the program we are without them. Sincerely, Jamie Lawson. And now number three, the final letter. And this letter is from Cindy Early, also a Spad employee. To whom it may concern, I am writing this on behalf of several coworkers and myself. We have serious concerns about our salaries as paraprofessionals. We serve students who need the most support in the least restrictive environment. We assist the teachers in providing instruction, taking data, facilitating communication, and social skills, helping to develop lessons, managing behaviors, toileting, and more. In the teacher's absence, paraprofessionals are able to seamlessly run the class. We often deal with some of the most severe and aggressive behaviors. Obviously, we don't do this for the money, but because we are passionate about what we do and want to do the best for our students, their progress and their success makes it all worthwhile, no matter how difficult our jobs can be. However, we feel that our pay does not reflect the work that we do. Most paraprofessionals are not even receiving a livable wage and may have to have a second job to support themselves financially. This includes staff that have been here two, five, or even 10-plus years. A strong employee with an excellent work history should not be at the lowest end of the pay scale after years and years of employment. We have expressed our concerns about our pay previously. We have been told that the pay scale is based on education and experience. However, new hires with little to no experience and no additional education are being offered salaries that exceed those who have been employed here for years. That in itself is hurtful and incredibly insulting. We feel that those of us that have dedicated years of work as employees of New Horizons are not valued at the higher level because our pay does not reflect that. Dr. Grant and Dr. Richardson have worked hard to build morale among the staff and to make us feel appreciated and valued, but that alone is not enough. Dr. Grant has always advocated for our students and the staff right from the beginning. She demands nothing but our best from her staff because she wants our program to grow and be the best it can be. We owe that to our students to make sure that they receive the education they deserve. Dr. Richardson has embraced this as well. This is why our, out of all the schools we could have worked for, we chose New Horizons. However, in order to be successful, there has to be a good, strong foundation. This means keeping those that have remained dedicated to our program and to the students that we serve. Those who have stuck it out no matter the challenges. Employees are frustrated and have expressed significant concerns. Our hope is that you will take all this into serious consideration when evaluating the current pay scale of the paraprofessionals and finalizing the budget. The students that we serve are the most severe. They come to us because their own schools are unable to meet their needs adequately and are not equipped to handle some of the most extreme behaviors. They need a specialized educational program in a less restrictive environment. New Horizons is able to provide this, and the staff is highly trained here. However, we are also subject to injury on a regular basis. Staff have received concussions, broken bones, bruises, lacerations, deal, dealing with being spit on, hit, kicked, et cetera. Most of us do not even make what paraprofessionals are making in regular public schools. We do what we do, not because it's glamorous, not because it's a high-paying job, but because we love our students and what our program stands for. Personally, this is one of the hardest yet most rewarding jobs I've ever had. However, many have expressed that they are unwilling to continue working in an environment where they are not fairly compensated. We are straight, we are expressing our concerns because we believe in this program, and we want to see it continue to grow and be its best. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the letters for public comment.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Bracy. I want to thank those who sent the letters and Ms. Duesbury for your comments and concerns on the night. We will investigate your concerns and get back with you. And so we thank you for presenting and sharing with us on tonight. Is there any announcements of the change in the agenda? We'll turn this over to Mr. Roberts.
No, no changes to note for today, tonight's agenda. But next on the agenda is the presentation from the Governor's School for Science and Technology. Ms. Vicky Wismer is the Director of the New Horizons Governor's School for Techn- Science and Technology. Will provide program updates and present with students about the collaborative projects that are underway during this year's senior mentorship portion. She's, she's joined by Mrs. Vobrak, the Honors Research Instructor and Mentorship Coordinator, Mr. Galen Ventura, the Senior Computational Science Instructor and a student, Mr. Chestnut, he's a senior at Bruton High School. All right, Ms. Wismer, you can take it away.
Good evening, board members and superintendents. Thank you for providing the opportunity to highlight the Governor's School program this evening. Ms. Laura Vobrak and Mr. Galen Ventura, along with his student Brendan Chestnut, will provide a highlight of how the Governor's School is collaborating with our four-year institutions, William &amp; Mary, on a National Science Foundation grant, as well as how the engineering and computational science students are collaborating with their engineering design projects. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Ms. Laura Vobrak. She is the Governor's School Honors Research Instructor and Mentorship Coordinator. Laura?
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm going to first talk about what we see here on this slide. This is our partnership with William &amp; Mary, and I'm going to read a little bit from my notes so that I don't leave anything out that I think is important about what we are doing. Dr. Nathaniel Kidwell is an assistant professor in the Chemistry Department at the College of William &amp; Mary. And he has been a mentor with our program since 2017. He has, up until now, actually mentored nine of our students, and he has provided them with authentic research experiences in his laboratory at William &amp; Mary, which he calls the Kidwell Lab. Even on their website, William &amp; Mary, you can see our students featured working on his projects. What he is working on with them now is constructing and deploying a handheld multi-sensor device based on Arduino microcontrollers. This device measures concentrations of gases, aerosol, particulate matter, temperature and humidity to monitor the chemistry in the atmosphere. And our students have paired the handheld Arduino multi-sensor, which they have dubbed the Arduino device with an Android smartphone app interface via Bluetooth to transmit and display the atmospheric measurements in real time with time and location tracking. This work with our students and the students at William &amp; Mary was recently published, and I believe we have a slide showing this, in the Journal of Chemical Education with our students cited as co-authors in this article. And it describes the Arduino device, the app interface, and the regional atmospheric chemistry results. More recently, our students have developed a more modular design to place on drones for vertical profiling of the atmosphere. Dr. Kidwell has received a National Science Foundation grant to continue and extend this research with the Governor's School. The goal is to give our students the opportunity to build this Arduino device to be incorporated into an Internet of Things network. Dr. Kidwell is also collaborating with our instructors in the Computational Sciences and Engineering Departments. Currently under the guidance of these instructors, the students are learning how to program the Arduinos. Recently, Dr. Kidwell and some of his students at William &amp; Mary met with our students at the Governor's School to discuss the atmospheric chemistries linked to regional aerosol production. They are also guiding the students in how to measure atmospheric data, which will be published in a peer-reviewed journal sponsored by the National Science Foundation. The long-term goal is for our students to be active participants in improving our understanding of atmospheric aerosol chemistry by crowdsourcing real-time measurements with geographical and seasonal variations or comparison with results from NASA Langley, NASA Goddard, VCU, and the Virginia Institute of Marine Science. So we've been very excited about this. And actually, in addition to the publication that we're looking at, there was a previous publication also. So it's great for the Governor's School to be able to highlight our students' work with some of our partners at the universities.
And I would just like to briefly add to Laura Vobrak, our Mentorship Coordinator. She actually stepped in this year to take over the senior research because we had a vacancy. But Ms. Vobrak, during the pandemic, placed almost all of our students in virtual mentorships, and they were quite successful. I have to say too that Ms. Vobrak is working with probably over 150 of businesses, associations, hospitals, universities, and business people. So Ms. Vobrak is to be commended for the opportunity that she is providing for these students to work with professionals in their field of interest and really having a real-world experience with research. So Ms. Vobrak, once again, you know how greatly I appreciate all that you do. I know we're limited on time, so I'm going to move right to Mr. Galen Ventura. He is the Governor's School Senior Computational Science Instructor, and he will provide an overview of the senior engineering design projects, what that mean, and what that means, as well as introduce one of his students, Brandon Chestnut. Mr. Ventura, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Hi, thank you. Yes, so in the Governor's School, we have our engineering design, innovation entrepreneurship projects, which are these year-long projects that we have groups of students undertake in each of our classes. And these students set about actually designing a product or a prototype of something that they see there's a need for in the world and that they feel would be extremely useful. And that they are then able to develop at the Governor's School during our, our class time. The students are able to basically have any resources that they need within the capabilities of reality. And as such, we're able to have things for them that they can then use in order to develop whatever they desire. I have one student here today who is working on a very exciting project that has to do with helping with active pets. And I would like for him to go ahead and introduce his project. His name is Brandon Chestnut, and he is doing a project on a new and improved tennis ball launcher for active pets and animals. Brandon, you can go ahead and start if you like.
I think we're going to start my slides. Okay. So hi, I'm Brandon Chestnut, and for our senior project this year, my group chose to make a improved automatic tennis ball launcher for active pets. So on the next slide, I will show you. So a little bit about me, I have So a little bit about me, I have two German Shepherd pointers at my house. One's named Bodhi, he's the one that going for the ball in the left picture. And one's named Bella, she's in the back. And if anybody's familiar with German Shepherd pointers, they know they're very, very active dogs. They are recommended about one to two hours of exercise twice a day. Now, that is a lot of exercise, but our dogs love uh throwing the tennis ball. And we like to channel that exercise, but they can run for hours and throwing with your hand is just impractical. So we bought a, an, an extender, which is the chuckle you see in the middle that helps us throw it further, but still at this rate, they can still outrun us for hours again because they won't stop. So we looked into the market of automatic tennis ball launchers, as you see on the right, where the ball, where the dog drops the ball into a bucket and it's then launched automatically. Now, there's a lot of market options for this, but there's a lot of, they all face the same general issues. First, there's a very small uh throw distance, maximum of like 75 feet, but that's an overstatement. Normally, they're below 50 feet. They're also all over a hundred dollars because it's a very niche product. So they're, they're, they tend to be expensive. And most importantly, they're vulnerable to wet tennis balls. And while on the product, they say, don't put any wet tennis balls in there if your dog's playing with them for an hour or so. It's gonna, the tennis ball is gonna get wet. And for example, we bought the product on the top left and it broke within a, like a week and a half because it broke the sensor because the tennis ball was wet, but we couldn't help that. So on our next slide, we want to make our own design, which uses a thrower arm, as you see here, spins it up to speed and launches the ball at a cert, at a predetermined angle. And with this design, we are aiming to achieve an over 50-meter launch distance, which is around 160 feet. And we're going to separate our component, so there's no chance of water damage. We're going to plan for that, because that's the most important part, honestly. And we want it to be adjustable power and launch angle. For example, my dog likes to jump for the ball sometimes, so you like to throw it up really high, so it has a high bounce. But again, that's more of a um, that's more of a secondary goal. Our main goal is to have no chance of water damage and a good launch distance. So some specifics about my pro, about the uh design on the next slide is, so some specifics, as I said before, we're going to separate our layout. We're going to have our load area and launch arm in different locations. But most importantly, our motors, electronics, and chain is going to be located in its own sealed box, so it doesn't have any chance of water damage from the ball or the, you know, outside weather. We're going to use a servo to activate the release mechanism that'll allow us to adjust the launch angles for it. And to reduce cost and help with simplicity, we're going to use cheap SIM motors for our drive, to drive it. And then lastly, we're going to use aluminum for our frame and support because it doesn't rust. And it's very, it's pretty light for its strength. I must mention really quick that all of these materials have been provided by the robotics team at New Horizons. They're connected with the Governor's School. And I'm very thankful to them for that. They're giving us access to some of their men, to some of the mentors from NASA, along with all of their uh tools, like a CNC and 3D printer and all. So they've helped greatly on that. And that covers my uh, our senior project for this year.
Great. Thank you so much, Brandon. Um, I just, to the board and to all that's listening, I, I really have to say thank you to Galen Ventura and his partner, Dr. Al Bayrak. Uh, they work with many, many students and providing them these opportunities. Um, they're very fortunate to have students such as Brandon, who are very bright and creative and so conscientious and dedicated. So I um, you know, as the director, just want to say thank you to my faculty, thank you to the students. Um, and that's the end of our presentation.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation, Ms. Wismer and Ms. Vobrak. And especially for you, Mr. Chestnut, for your, uh, I would, I would like to say invention, but uh your new and improved automatic tennis ball launcher. So we thank you so much for your presentation. Any questions for any board members or comments? Well, if not, then we will uh move on to an approval, uh, motion for the approval of our consent agenda.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm presenting the minutes from the January 25th meeting, um, the personnel report and the financial report for the review and the consent agenda. But it's for me.
All right. But we need a, we need a, a motion at a second. From one, from one or two of you, of the board members. Thank you very much.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It was moved by, who was the?
Dr. Goodell.
Dr. Goodell, okay. And then seconded by?
Mr. Myatt.
Mr. Myatt, all right. Ms. Bracy, can you offer the role?
Yes, Dr. Goodell.
Hi.
Mrs. Young, have you joined the call? Mr. Myatt?
Hi.
Mr. Harris?
Hi.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Hi.
And Mrs. Rice, have you joined the call? If not, Mr. Chair, that is four eyes.
All right, thank you. Moving right along, we will uh for board action, uh, the CTE program fees, Mr. Ray and Ms. Stevens.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. This is the 2022-23 CTE Program Fees Presentation. Next slide, please. So as you can see, we have CTE student program fees for each one of our programs. Um, our fees are used to cover PPE, which is protective, personal protective equipment that the students use respective to their programs. Cover some of their, covers their uniforms. There are some materials that the students are responsible for that they do get to keep once they have completed the class, their safety certifications, if they need them, as well as their career technical student organization um membership fees. Some of the CTSOs that we're a part of, we're a part, part of HOSA. Um, we have students who are part of the AWS. Um, we have FFA, we have FCC LA, and we also are um huge members of Skills USA. Next slide, please. So at the Woodside Lane campus, um, because Mr. Ray's campus and my campus vary in the programs that we offer, um, the fees are going to look somewhat different. Um, at the Woodside Lane, where I have primarily the construction trades, um, classes, those uniforms are going to increase anywhere between eight to $10. Um, in construction, they primarily utilize the coveralls or they can utilize um a regular work shirt, um, which protects their clothes. They are um doing a lot of things that require cutting and you don't want your personal clothes messed up. Um, we then also have other trades where they are dealing with fire. So those shirts have to be flame resistant um to prevent them from being burned or injured in any type of way. So far as um pharmacy tech, they do have a prep pack that they use in order to um prepare for their national certification. That cost is rising, so that unfortunately is passed onto the student. And then the same thing for vet science with their scrubs. Um, Cisco, um, criminal justice, early childhood, their fees are primarily the same, but because of the additional costs that have been added to the uniforms, um, that is passed on as well at a cost of five dollars. Next slide.
Good evening, Board members, superintendents. Just going to talk just briefly about the CTE fees updates for the Butler Farm campus. Um, again, these are slight increases, five, $10 here and there with the programs, uh, with these increases basically due to the cost of rise in inflation. And also with the fees updates here is the new program down on the bottom of this slide, our Marine Service Technology Program, which has been added for 2223, which includes the CPR certification, which is required. Uh, also covers Skills USA, which Ms. Stevens had mentioned. Uh, this program will participate with that. And again, just like all our other programs, uh, students will get a uniform shirt uh in the marine program. So we're excited about this program, we're rolling. Uh, and we'll be sharing some more updates about that program at future board meetings. So again, cost of inflation is what all our cost increases in the Butler Farm is attributed to. Next slide. Uh, just talk briefly about community scholarships. Uh, here you see the York County Volunteer Association has created what they call the Bargain Box Scholarship. And this scholarship is designed for York and Bocosen students, uh, which could help them pay and offset their cost of fees. So we've been doing this program for a couple of years now. And uh, you know, students can go through an application process, which they submit to the building principals. Uh, we review those and uh award the scholarships as needed. And you can see there for the two years data, uh, the amount of the York and Bocosen students who are being served uh with this scholarship. So we're always looking for additional opportunities and other uh community organizations and things that are looking to help our students. Uh, so this is just a great example of, of one that partnership we've done in the past couple of years. Next slide. So as far as moving forward, uh, kind of tied into our CTE strategic plan, uh, the CTE administration visited the Massanup technical center back in February and talking with them a little bit about how they do their fees. And they have a flat fee system, which they charge each one of their students, regardless of what program uh that they're participating in. So we're looking at that model, uh, also talking some, to additional career and tech centers around the state of Virginia, uh, seeing what they're doing just to be able to look for additional funding ideas and opportunities to help with the rising cost of program fees. Um, and then finally, we're looking at uh the possibility of restructuring some events, uh, such as our annual golf classic, uh, working with the foundation, uh, looking for different ways that we can raise funds to be able to help to offset uh program fees. So as we get a little further along in the process, uh, we'll share some of those updates and ideas as they become available. So, next slide. And I think we're at a point, if there's any questions, we have about CTE fees.
And Mr. Chairman, um, in the board book, you have the list of all the uh student fees by course. Some of them did not increase, some of them did increase. Uh, but I wanted the principals to give kind of an overview of, you know, what we currently are, are dealing with and going forward, how we're going to try to subsidize these increases on students and parents um by, by accessing uh different um streams of funding, whether it be grants, fundraising, uh, through foundation activities.
Okay. Mr. Ray, Ms. Stevens, um, thank you so much for your report on this evening. Are there any questions from any of the board members before we move this to a vote?
It's Dr. Woodhouse, it's Mr. Myatt. And I just wanted to again um reinforce your comments. I'm, I'm really pleased that we're looking across, you know, the program to see where, where we can't take advantage of um other possible funding streams or lines. Also looking for exemplars across the state, that's great. Got flat fee, kind of entered my mind when I was looking earlier through some of the information um by program. So I really appreciate um everybody uh doing that and, and focusing on that. And yes, let's make these recurring kind of updates. I'd like to know uh what kind of headway we make. Anything we can do to help is, is obviously useful. So now I wanted to let folks know how much I appreciate looking across uh, are looking for different opportunities. Thank you.
Any other board members?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, uh, in Mississippi, they had a big brother program that uh facilitated each one of the areas. So say for instance, welding, uh, funding came from, you know, the shipyard, nurses assistants or whatever the case may be, they came out of the, or the hospitals there. So just, just another opportunity to look at. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Doc, Mr. Harris. Any other, any other comments? Great report, great report. Thank you. Um, so we're ready to make a motion.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the FY 2023 CTE program fees as presented.
Second.
And we moved and properly second, so the address bracelet to call a row.
Dr. Goodell?
Hi.
Myatt?
Hi.
Harris?
Hi.
Woodhouse?
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, that is four eyes.
Okay, so thank you. Again, we want to thank you for the uh, the great work that you all are doing at the CTE, uh, on the CTE program. And um, from here, we go to the Executive Director's Budget, Mr. Roberts.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, good evening to the board members and superintendents and the New Horizons staff. I'm going to give a presentation on uh the proposed FY 23 budget. So in your board package, you have a copy of the board book of the proposed budget to include um a timeline of the budget process, which was approved back in December. This is the process by which um I use to meet certain benchmarks when developing the um budget with the superintendent and the division, divisional teams. Also in the um, in your board documents, you also have, um, especially for Dr. Goodell, um, how the budget is put together by program. It's a, it's a complicated set of formulas that we use to um calculate how much the divisions allocate to New Horizons um to take care of funding needs for programming. So I've included all of those documents in the board book. Um, you can view those at your leisure. So right now, we're at the mark of March 23rd, uh, where I'm going to present my board, uh, propose, the proposed um budget to the board. Uh, and then finally, our last board meeting, which will be May 24th, uh, I'll make the recommendation to the board to adopt the budget. And that's the, the vote that the budget will go live July 1st, um, going into the next fiscal year. Uh, this is the quick reference sheet that I was referring to. At the very top, you have the cost allocation plan by program and locality that was put into place um in 2005, kind of just gives you some background information of how the budget is developed for New Horizons um and also by program. Um, the three, uh, the four main programs that the divisions really fund is Career and Tech, Governor's School, Center for Autism, and Newport Academy. Um, the Center for Apprenticeship and Adult Training and Youth Workforce Centers are both self-funded. Youth Workforce Center is funded through a WeOre grant from the Amtrak Roads Workforce Council. Uh, and the Center for Apprenticeship and Adult Training is a self-funded entity within New Horizons. Um, and so the divisions do not allocate money to that. The William &amp; Mary Family Counseling Center um is funded from a one-time amount of 78,600 that we um allocate to William &amp; Mary Family Counseling Center to provide stipends, you know, the operational cost to run that program out of William &amp; Mary. So here are the priorities for fiscal year 23. The first priority is a five-year, a 5% salary increase for all full-time employees. Uh, in addition, uh, to address some of the concerns of the support staff at the Center for Autism and Newport Academy, I'd like to implement a first-stage experience adjustments to their salaries. Um, the salaries of the support staff have gone, um, never have been updated to the cost of living and also inflation. You have some, some uh members um on our staff that started with New Horizons a decade or two ago. Um, and their salaries were between eight to $10,000 two decades ago. Uh, many of the uh staff members um that are working as support staff members um are not um close to the 30,000 K mark. So I want to address uh the support staff salary structure in the first stage. The first stage is to provide uh 1% for years. If you have years of experience between uh six and 10 years, you get 1% plus five will give you 6% salary increase. If you have joined New Horizons between zero and five years, you just get the 5% salary increase because you started at a higher uh point on the scale because of, the scale's actually caught up. So you're, you're coming in higher than a lot of people that have been with us for some time. Uh, going forward, uh, 2% for um employees that have 11-year, 11 to 20 years of experience. So they get a 7% salary increase. And those that have been with us for 20-plus years will get three. So we'll give them 8% salary increase. So those that have been here the longest will, will get pushed up the salary scale, the existing salary scale faster than those. Will, will get pushed up the salary scale, the existing salary scale faster than those that have just come in. That's the first stage. My second stage is to conduct a compensation study. To really find out how competitive we are with the, with surrounding, uh, surrounding school divisions. And also regional centers that do the work that we do, uh, so that we can present a compensation study that is competitive. Um, and that we do appropriately compensate all of our employees from, um, the bottom up. The next priority is increased staffing for the governor's school by one FTE. Uh, currently, we have, uh, two research teachers that have a, a load of several, uh, several students. Um, and it's become overwhelming to do undergraduate level research thesis. Is the right term. A mentorship for these students that are working on the, the, those research papers. Um, so we need an additional, uh, FTE to kind of help spread the numbers and spread the load between our two research teachers, so that one FTE. Um, is added to the governor's school. The next is integrating the FY twenty-two, uh, FTEs and related benefits from the carryover funds. Uh, that we lose, used last year, integrate that into the FY twenty-three divisional cost allocation. If you remember last year. Um, because of, um, an edict that came down from VDOE as far as students that were aged out of special education. Could now have an extra year. We had to hire an addition, additional teachers. And TAs to cover the additional students added to our roles, which we did not account for, and I was able to use, uh, carryover funds. Of a fiscal year twenty-two going into twenty-one, going into twenty-two to cover that cost. Right now, I'm going to integrate. All of those, um, carryover positions that we need because our, our, uh, enrollment in special education has gone up. Um, into the fiscal year twenty-three, so it is absorbed within the divisional allocation versus using carrier funds, um, to cover those positions. Um, additionally, uh, we've been dealing with the same issues that school divisions are dealing with, with substitutes. Um, some school divisions have increased the rate, the rates for substitutes. Uh, we have, have not been able to because of our set budget. Um, so I've requested an additional increase of thirty thousand dollars into our subaccount so that we can raise our sub rates. To be competitive with the six surrounding school divisions when attracting subs to, to work in New Horizons. On a good note, uh, we're continuing the trend of no healthcare premium increases for fiscal year twenty-three, so this is a three-year trend. Uh, where we have been able to keep all healthcare premiums the same for each of those years. So these are the costs for the salary increases plus the, um, experience adjustments, um, for the support staff at Center for, uh, Autism and Newport Academy. Uh, followed by healthcare, there are no healthcare benefit increases and then related employee benefits increase, FICA. Um, those related, um, benefits increase as salary increases are covered, so the compensation increase cost would be nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. Proposed. The instructional increases include one FTE to governor's school, which is approximately ninety, uh, ninety K. Um, and integrating the FY twenty-two FTEs and related benefits covered from, uh. New Horizons carryover funds into the fiscal year twenty-three divisional cost allocation, which is two hundred and fifteen thousand. And then also increasing the substitute rate by thirty thousand brings an instructional increase cost of three hundred and five thousand. So the total budget for FY twenty-three is twenty-two million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand. Uh, that is a total increase of one point two million, a five point eight percent increase from last year. And to the divisional cost allocation, nineteen million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand. Uh, for a cost increase to the divisions, one point two-six million, which is a six point nine increase. The majority, the bulk of that one point two-six million is in. Um, upper, uh, per, uh, personnel salary increases of five percent. And that's a six point nine percent increase from last year. Uh, and then I've also included down at the bottom, uh, total budget increases include operational increases to Center for Apprenticeship and Adult Training, which is self-funded. And the Youth Workforce Center, which they get their funding through the WEOA grant and Hamster Roads Workforce Council. Um, and any other operational increases outside of the, the divisional cost allocation include the ESY summer program. And CFAT, CFAT costs, textbooks, paying, increasing salaries for instructors for CFAT. Uh, marketing budget, all those are accounted in the total, uh, increased budget of New Horizons. So just kind of give you an, uh, cost allocation summary of the nineteen million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, thirteen million is from special education. So that's a seven percent increase. Uh, we have an increase in the number of students that are coming to, uh, New Horizon Center for Autism Newport Academy. Uh, for this upcoming year. Uh, current technical education is five million dollars of the nineteen million dollar divisional allocation budget. And then governor's school is one point three-four million. Um, and the twenty-two percent increase is coming from that additional FTE that we've added to their staff. Uh, the potential state, uh, special education reimbursement, and this is just an estimate, you generally is around the reimbursement rate of sixty-seven point five percent. Uh, that is reimbursed by the state, so divisions are able to go after that reimbursement from the state to cover. The initial upfront costs of running special education services from the Center for Autism Newport Academy. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-three, and then your local special education funding is four point two million, and that will serve two hundred and sixty-three students for fiscal year twenty-three. All right, that is, uh, the budget in a nutshell. Um, you have a thirty-five-page document that kind of goes a little bit more in-depth looking at expenses. And revenue sides of the budget, um, that you can review at your leisure, but I've given you the high level and the priorities, um, in this budget. And I, I will be open to any questions and discussion you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions from any board members concerning the budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three? Any questions? No questions. Okay, but it seems to be tight to me. So this, uh, this is a, this is an action item, so we need to have a, a motion to accept the budget and a second.
So this, just, just to, uh, just to clarify, this is just to an agreement that the proposed budget is agreed upon. Now, there will possibly be some, um, changes of monies being moved around within the existing bottom line. The bottom line divisional allocation line item will not change. It will still be nineteen million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand. Uh, but we are shifting some funds around to cover certain initiatives and programs that we're doing. Within the budget, so this is just to acknowledge that the proposed budget is, is, is accepted. Um, with possible some changes, but the cost allocation, um, and the total overall budget for New Horizons will not change.
So that's good to know.
This is, uh, Mr. Myatt, um, Mr. Chair, uh, move we approve the FY twenty-three proposed budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Bracey, will you call the row?
Dr. Goodell?
Hi.
Harris?
Hi.
Myatt?
Hi.
And Dr. Woodhouse?
Hi.
That is four eyes, Madam, Mr. Chairman.
Then the proposed budget has been accepted. Thank you. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Um. At this time, we will have, uh, Mr. Roberts to give us some information on the executive director's report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, on the, uh, the executive director's report, I'm not going to go through all of these, uh, reports. I provided a mid-year report to you for your viewing pleasure to see where we are with our, uh, school improvement plans that are directly related and aligned to the strategic plan. Uh, please take a look at that at your leisure to kind of gauge where we are. Um, a lot of the program leaders are, are doing some phenomenal work and they are making. Um, their way to completing these goals that they've set at the beginning of the school year. I wanted to give you an update on the Teacher of the Year program. Today, we had our first Teacher of the Year announcement at the Woodset Lane CTE campus. So we're excited about that program to acknowledge our teachers and the hard work that they do. Each program, um, CTE at both campuses, Governor's School, Center for Autism Newport Academy, will all have a Teacher of the Year. Uh, and then we will have a banquet, um, on May twenty, um, yeah, May eighteenth. At the Marriott of Newport News, and that's when the, um, the overall Teacher of the Year for New Horizons will be awarded. This entire Teacher of the Year program is funded and endorsed by the New Horizons Foundation, so they will be, they are paying for everything, the banquet. The awards, um, and even a cash prize for the, uh, Teacher of the Year for New Horizon, so I think that this is a great. Way to support our teachers and acknowledge the work that they do every year. Next year, uh, we will be adding the element of a support staff member of the year. Um, to the Teacher of the Year program, um, just as a recognition program. Because we want to recognize the hard work that's being done in, in our, in our programs. Next, um, I don't know if you had an opportunity, but we have a brand-new website, um, that went live February one. Um, clean, user-friendly, colorful, lots of pictures. Feel free to go through this website, uh, at your leisure to take a look at it. It, it involved a lot of stakeholders, uh, providing feedback. Uh, I think it's, it's user-friendly, uh, it includes a lot of elements that you see in, in updated websites. Um, and it was desperately needed from our old one. Um, so at your leisure, please, uh, take a look at our brand-new website. Um, I've included some dates into the year award programs, so all of the dates are there. Our completer cer, I'm sorry. Our career selection date for the Good Life Solution Program is May twelfth. Uh, at Liberty Baptist, you should have received an invitation in, in RSVP with Ms. Bracey. Our completer, a CTE completer ceremony is June first, Governor's School is June seventh. And Center for Autism Newport Academy is June thirteenth and fourteenth. So if you're able to attend, we would love to have you there to celebrate with the students as they complete their programs. Or complete their program of study with the Center for Autism Newport Academy and go off to the world of work or to school. Uh, we definitely want to include you in our celebratory events coming up. And that's all I have for my executive director's report, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Roberts? Any questions from any board members? Then we will move on to announcements and information, Mr. Roberts.
Uh, again, I have lots and lots of great announcements, uh, of the, the great work that's being done in New Horizons. If you did not know, we had. A team from the Woodset Lane Colony Arts, uh, program to, uh, go to Houston. They, uh, actually went last week. Uh, to compete with ten other teams on the national level and, and hopefully in the next week or two, we'll find out the results from that. They had a fantastic time and represented New Horizons as well, uh, and they, they represented four school divisions and on that one team, so, uh, we're very excited about. Spreading, spreading the wealth of celebratory, uh, events with our participating school divisions. Um, secondly, we had the governor's school achieve, uh, be named the twenty-two top school in Liv, in Virginia Living Mag, Magazine. I believe this is their. Sixth or seventh, um, award, um, being named, uh, top school. Um, so there's a press release for that, um, that we sent off to, um, media releases and the school divisions to celebrate with us, and they posted it, and we have actually had WBC. Actually post the press release for the NASA Hunch Challenge. Uh, WT Care, I'm sorry. We also have the March twenty-two edition of the, uh, New Horizons in Action Newsletter for your viewing pleasure. Um, the teacher innovation grants for the foundations are also supporting that. Um, that's in full swing. Those applications are due April twenty-ninth. And then I also want to, uh, send a shout-out and congratulations to Dr. Shander, who was named Region Two Superintendent of the Year. Well done, sir. Mr. Chairman, that, those are my announcements.
All right, any question for Mr. Roberts? Mr. Roberts, what do we know about the, uh, the NASA Hunch Challenge?
Hopefully in a week or two. In a week or two, we'll, we'll know the results from that, um, and hopefully we'll bring home the win.
I'm looking forward to it. Any questions? Any comments? All right, then we will move to, uh, twenty-two, sixty-four, that's discussion of current issues. For the board members and or superintendents. Are there any discussions? On any issue that we need to bring to light? Okay, well, it's, we will need to go into a closed session.
Subscript.
So this is it?
No, no, you just need to read the statement right there.
All right, so. For our closed session, uh, discussion, I move that the board go into closed session, pursuant to Virginia Code. Two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, A four. To protect the privacy of individuals of personal matters not related to public business. I need a motion. And that's, that's the motion. I need a second.
Second?
Second.
Dr. Goodell?
Hi.
Myatt?
Hi.
Harris?
Hi.
Thank you, Woodhouse.
Hi.
That is four eyes.
All right, so the board will be going into closed session. So all the board members and superintendents, and the superintendents will be entered closed session. Thank all of you for your reports on tonight. Have a wonderful and, and great rainy evening.